We are down in Mbari for what we are calling the Town Hall Meeting. I know many of you are like, this is a rare thing, but trust me, it's the third time it's happening. And this is Catty CEO of GAVI, you know, UNICEF, WHO and PATH. They are the ones who are behind this and we are talking. Our topic of discussion this afternoon is immunization. As you can see right behind here, the theme is the importance of immunization in protecting children, families and livelihoods. But I'm not the expert like I normally tell you on this subject matters. I have a panel here with me and I'm going to ask each member of them to introduce themselves. Then we get right into the panel discussion. Good afternoon. Okay, I'll hand over the microphone to you so you can introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Emily Chaptoyek. I'm a Principal Nursing Officer at the Ministry of Health and I support the immunization program. And from Mbari region, I coordinate the entire region, especially on immunization activities and the upcoming big catch-up immunization program. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Masawa James. I'm the Secretary of Health Services by District Local Government. In this meeting, I'm representing RSC five person, but on this panel, I'm representing woman MP by District Local Government. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. Yes, my name is Agnes Masagwai. I am the District Senior Health Educator from Mbari District Local Government. On this panel, I'm representing my DHO, Dr Jonathan Masawangisi. Thank you.
Good afternoon, our key stakeholders. My name is Dr Moses Simogonye, the City Health Office in Mbari City. You're welcome to this very important engagement.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to start right now with you, sister. First, we'd like to thank the Ministry of Health that done a very big job in trying to ensure that this information comes down to you. I'm sure if you watch many of the TV stations, you've seen adverts in different formats with different messages. They always have the messages coming on board, but they also do have partners that come along with them. Now, I'll get straight to you, sister. There is a word that everybody seems to be talking about, you know, the big catch-up. Now, the big catch-up sounds more like a campaign or something I would imagine more in line with entertainment. What is the big catch-up?
Thank you very much. The big catch-up, as it sounds, is a name or a term that has been used by the Ministry of Health to ensure that we catch up on most of the vaccines, on all the unimmunized children, all the missed doses, and all those who have never gotten in touch with vaccination as a bigger activity. So just a way of making us understand where this came up from. We have been conducting what we call the Integrated Child Health Days. And this have been happening, it is a strategy by Ministry of Health, where we do a catch-up on missed services, especially maternal child health services. So this time around, from the following the COVID-19 that we had some years back and all other things that have been happening, we have noticed as Ministry of Health through the data that comes in, that most of the children are missing on the services. And that is the cause for the outbreaks that are happening. We have experienced measles outbreaks, we have experienced polio outbreaks, and recently we've just conducted a polio campaign, and so many others. And this clearly indicates that we have a very big population down there that is not immune, that is not protected from vaccine-preventable diseases. So at the Ministry of Health, UNIP and partners came up with this concept of the big catch-up to ensure that they reach out to everybody who missed a service within that period. So we are going out there to look out for whoever missed any service as regards to vaccination so that we are able to update their status. And so in that way, we'll be boosting the immunity of the population and we prevent these upcoming outbreaks. And that is the reason for the big catch-up. And also the strategy that is coming in there is what informs the term, big catch-up. Thank you.
If the big catch-up starting in this region first, or you had it happen in other regions as well, what are the target area would be the region where the outbreak is higher?
Basically, the outbreaks have been sporadic. What do I mean? I mean, they appear in all corners of the country, in different countries. So far, we have had like 44 outbreaks for measles. But these are not specific to the eastern region, Sembare region, but they are in other areas. And we still continue to see them. So the big catch-up is for the whole nation, the whole of Uganda, so that we protect everybody and prevent these emerging outbreaks. So it is an intervention that usually happens, that is a bigger way of the Integrated Child Health Days. But for this time, we have conducted it in November because we were planning and preparing to have it in a bigger way. That is the cause for this.
Do you think by dressing it up with this catch-up, certain times, imagine a soda campaign, a workgroup, just from the way it sounds, it sounds very fancy. Do you think by dressing it up to give it that sound, the big catch-up, you will be able to achieve your target?
Yeah, basically, the strategy that has been designed by the Ministry of Health, first of all, we have been having challenges in accessing, in the population accessing these services in the health facilities. Much as the health facilities provide a free service, our people do not seek the service as expected. Secondly, we have bottlenecks here and there. Sometimes the distance to the facility is so far. We are now working mothers, we don't have the time to take the children to the facilities for these services. So all those gaps accumulate, accumulate, and expose our children and our population to vaccine-preventable diseases. So the big catch-up has come up with a strategy of reducing the distance, reducing the distance to the post. We are going to have what we call a post-based strategy in the villages. Place a post in a village and in that way will have reduced the distance over which a parent or a caretaker can access the service. So in that way, we feel that when we reduce the distance by taking posts to the villages, we shall be able to catch everybody who missed a service and therefore capture a bigger number compared to the previous ways where we would wait for them at the health center or probably just stage one outreach at a parish level or at a sub-county level and still the distance challenge would not be catered for. So this time, we are going down to the village. And in every village, you will see a team of health workers and there will be a mobilizer at least trying to inform you of the services that are available and everybody will get a service. Especially persons, children below five years, that is a compulsory target population that must come to the post. Girls who are 10 years old will also get a service. Other children, even between that age group, they will come to the post and get the service, the warming and vitamin A. And then we also have women of childbearing age, who are the 15 to 49. And these women are in our communities, they are in the secondary schools. We shall still reduce on the distance by allowing our teams be in those villages which are near those schools and sometimes even stage their posts at the schools so that we are able to capture these numbers. So that is the essence for the big catch-up. We want to upgrade or update the vaccination status of every eligible person so that we, Uganda, we stop having these outbreaks that are coming in now.
Before I move to the next panelist, I would like to ask, how long is this campaign going to be within the region? Because you know, like we say, the integrated health services, we know are for a specific period of time. Is this going to be ongoing or it's on only for a specific period of time?
Yeah, usually, it's like I said, it's a strategy of the Ministry of Health. Usually, we have it in two months, April and October. So this time, the October one, we are having it in November, okay? But it runs across the entire month. Because we can't have it in a short period, we want to give time to the people to access these services in all the outreach posts within their villages. So it runs across the entire month and it may even extend up to some bit of December. Our target is to reach every village and leave nobody behind.
As a representative, thank you so much. As a representative of whoever you are representing, now, Mbari is one of those administrative units in Bugishu Subregion with the highest number of children who have not been vaccinated. Am I right?
You're right, based on the recent concluded vaccination data.
Why is it turning out that way?
There are so many factors, but among other factor that I can say here is because sometimes the communities have not been intensively sensitized about the vaccination activities. Also, we had issues to do with the short surprise of vaccination materials. Some villages missed vaccination because the surprise was less than the expected number to be immunized. Also, we have some communities in Mbari who don't believe in immunization of their children because of the myths and misconceptions that they have. So we have been working along with some other stakeholders to ensure that such communities, such families are sensitized and also submit their kids for immunization. But also, we have another issue of geographical factor that sometimes in Bad District, you realize that we have three types of topographies. And sometimes, we realize that some sub-counties are bigger than other sub-counties. But now, the problem with the central government is that when it comes to planning, they plan for sub-county, not for geographical area of a sub-county. So you realize that a coordinator or a parish coordinator or a VHT in some villages or some parishes, they walk long distances to reach some families. So by doing that, sometimes they are caught up by time and they don't reach in every corner of the sub-county. That also has been a challenge. Also, we have a challenge of motivation. You realize that sometimes, because the VHT working in hard-to-reach areas is also earning the same money as that one working from an easier place that one can reach each and every family. You realize the one working from hard-to-reach areas is less motivated because of the extra work that he should is doing to ensure that immunization takes place. But also, we had the issues to do with some MPs who don't come down to participate in some coordination meetings at the district level. Because this is a program that is national in nature and respect that because coming from the central, the MPs who sit at the central should come along with the program to grassroots so that we can participate with them in planning, in sensitization, and also in some other activities to vaccination and other things like that. So as Bad District, we had that challenge of having a lesser number of people who were immunized because of some of the challenges that we have cited here.
Okay, it's very unfortunate because now I'm wondering if the statistics are reflecting like that now with the big catch-up. I guess you have a strategy. We will discuss about that.
And for example, we have some families in one of the sub-counties of Mbari, that is Yung SubCounty, at the extreme end of Uchilai, the border Sironko and Mbari. So sometimes when they hear that we are coming to vaccinate in that area, they cross to Sironko. So by time reached there, you find when they have transferred their kids to Sironko side, then when the vaccination is done, they come back with their families. So we have had that. But taking at the average, our parents, the parents of these kids have the will to submit their kids for immunization, save for those challenges that I cited. Sometimes because of the environment, sometimes because of the myths and conceptions, sometimes some leaders are not down on grassroots to sensitize. Because we have seen planning where some stakeholders have been left out in this exercise. Say RSC1s plus RSC2s. Much as we know that some RSC1s also act as VHTs, but we had a problem choosing between RSC1s or VHTs as a district. So when we went with VHTs, you realize that sometimes even this RSC1 can also play as, can act as sub-teams. You count the village because not involved, he tries to sabotage the program. I'm sorry to say this, but some can also act as sub-teams.
That is noted, we shall have that conversation. Please pass on the microphone. You're most welcome. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
I'm sorry I missed your introduction. I'll beg you to introduce yourself.
I'm Nakawala Naume, Deputy RRD C in Mbari District.
Okay, Deputy RRD C. Now, we would like you to share with us, you've had the issue of his comments where he says leaders are not coming down to sensitize the public about the importance and the role of immunizing the children. I would like you to share with us a little bit on that and throw out your role in terms of how you're going to help in the coordination of the big catch-up.
Thank you so much. It's just a call upon all leaders, but as in Mbari District, we've worked as a team. That's why we've managed to reach the target and even beyond the target because we work as a team. And it's a call to the rest of the district so as to achieve the targeted roles. We play a role, it is everyone's responsibility when it comes to immunization. The panelists also mentioned on the religious sects. And someone outside there will ask, who are these religious sects? These are a subgroup of people who follow their different beliefs and practices alongside the mainstream of the religion. We have saw a group that it calls it of triple six. We have it in Bubiangu SubCounty in the district. And what do we do as local government or as Mbari District or as security team to find it very easy for the campaign to go on? For the first round one of the immunization campaign that we had in around August, we went, we did the advance immunization. We went a day before the official immunizing day so that we just ambushed them. So these people are sometimes, right according to them, because of their religious beliefs, because some of these sects believe that a disease is a god's will. And then they also believe in protection and healing belongs to the Lord. And some others who don't accept vaccinations like our people who say that because we are in a fasting period because of their unknown reasons to themselves. So this, what brings about this, some of the factors is that most of these people lack information on a certain campaign, like now of the vaccination campaign, the big catch-up. We've planned at least to do a lot of dissemination, information dissemination on radios, in communities, community dialogues, also involve our religious leaders. Because we need to build trust, to rebuild the trust between these people and erase away their fears. And some other concerns, just like I mentioned, that they misinformation or misinformation by our leaders sometimes, that these vaccines are a danger to the lives of their children. Sometimes they are told that when you vaccinate, you again causing more problems to the child. So we've done a lot as the district. If peace talks fails, then we involve police for arrests to make sure that we reach the target.
I've not heard you talk about the area of the schools because the target audience of your kids, the majority of them are in schools.
Yes.
And it has really been a very big problem where we parents make a lot of noise and we're like, but I did not consent. Who gave you the right to vaccinate my child or immunize my child, you know? And you've had a lot of those issues come through as far as immunization is concerned.
Yes.
What plan do you have in place for that?
Yes, because we always call the head teachers for meetings and trainings. And then our villagey healthy teams help us emphasize the parents, as ourselves do on radios, on community radios, also those mega phones in the communities, we do go there for sensitization. And these are the other platforms like barriers, we always do attend because it is a must, a parent has to attend a barrier. So we go prior to the campaign to sensitize them, give them more light about how important is vaccination to their children.
Okay, then I also, that I think I'll ask at a later stage, I'll come back to sister. I would thank you so much. I'll beg for you to handle the microphone. Let's get to the medical perspective of it. As one of the panelists was discussing, he did mention something about certain times, there's, you know, like a drug stock-out, limited vaccines. How true is that?
Thank you, our program manager. Once again, I'm Dr Moses Simogonye, the City Health Office in Mbari City. The issues of vaccines is real, as evidenced by what happened in the round one of polio vaccination. We reached out to the community, they are all energized, they are all waiting for the vaccine. And my team were also energized to also deliver the vaccination. But unfortunately, the vaccines got finished when we are still on the way. So at the end of that campaign, we received deafening calls from the communities who are demanding for this service. And I don't take it lightly because having energized the people to receive a service, then you don't give that service. That community over time develops mistrust in you, which I feel as stakeholders on the giving side, we should take it very, very, very seriously.
So what measures have you put in place? I know the stakeholders have had this.
Yeah, so one of the measures which we found prominently was the underestimate of the population in Mbari City. This one has been evidence-based. I can give, I'm going to give the figures. According to Yubos, they calculated the population of Mbari City as being 350,000. And when you further extrapolate, the 20.5% of under five children, that one gives us the population of 73,000 children. So during the first campaign of polio, we went out to the community with that target in mind. But when we reached the community, we found, we even immunized much more than the 73 they gave us, but still we couldn't reach even the whole villages, whole cells in the city. And some schools also left out. So the target we reached out in the polio one was 91,000, having left out a lot of villages around the city. So again, we came back to the drawing board together with our stakeholders for Ministry of Health, not reached despite another extra effort. So which means the estimates by Yubos is grossly, I want to use the word wrong, but I think it was not well, I think they didn't do the proper due diligence in counting and has affected our chain of services. Because all services in the government, they are given depending on the size of population you are serving. That is number one, besides other indicators they use. So one of which, the factor number one, we already discussed advantage. No wonder as the Mbari City, we having a big number of children who are not immunized and a big number of those who are not partially, who are partially immunized. Because of those factors, they give us a different population. And when you go there looking for the immunized, they are there, much as you have done the due work, which is equivalent to resources you received from the center.
Wow. Then, given the terrains and the weather area is, how have you been able to successfully get to some of those hard-to-reach areas?
Yeah, thank you, madam, for that question. As the Mbari City for visitors, when they come to the city, they imagine the city is Naboa Road, Republic Street, Market Street. But this add you a little to Namakweke and Nawiyo. But that only contributes to about 30% of the land size of Mbari City. And the other remaining 70% is largely a rural area and most of it is rugged mountains and valleys. And to work in these areas is a challenge because the road network is very poor and the others, in other places, non-existent. Even if you have a vehicle, a border border, you will go to some far and beyond that, you just have to work on foot. And when it rains, you have to be prepared to fall with the vaccine carriers, but I'm lucky my staff, they have been very careful enough not to destroy some of those vaccines. But working there takes a lot because you have to have energized your workers. Otherwise, without rightful motivation, people can't work in those areas. It is much more than the small token they receive for Ministry of Health. It's just the zeal to serve the people, the zeal to make sure all these disease conditions are controlled in our communities. That's what drives them to go up in those areas. Thank you.
Okay. My last question to you, you know there are certain times when you're given the different kinds of vaccines you have, let's say for the different diseases, you know, like even when I saw on the list and I'm like diphtheria, but amazing, it's still there, you know? Which one do you notice in terms of the bits moves faster? Is it polio? Where is the response highest? Because I know there are some who'd, some parents can be a bit cagey and they would prefer or feel comfortable going with the particular. And because if I also studied about diphtheria when we were in school during our heydays, which one stands out most?
Yeah, thank you. I don't want to bias people, but I want to talk realities.
Please.
And when I'm talking to my people, I always avoid mentioning this because it can create some kind of bias. But naturally, people tend to be more receptive to vaccines which are not injectable, those ones which are given orally. Because they'll complain that the child is, and somehow the ones which are injectable have a little bit of more side effects. The ones which are oral, they almost go without any incidents. But if you inject, you find the pain at the side, sometimes swelling. If it gets out of hand, it may form an abscess. They may have a fever. Others, yeah, others may even have vomiting. But those are all manageable. That's why I always avoid talking about them.
Yeah, true.
But we have to sensitize people that this is part of the process of working of these vaccines. Yeah, but for the mothers whom they have not sensitized well, they're a little bit cagey on the injectable vaccines. But we encourage them as much as possible to embrace all the new vaccines that they are supposed to get for their child and other eligible persons. Yeah.
Okay. Then I would like, thank you so much. Agnes, as I came in earlier, I found you interacting quite well with your VHTs and the different teams around.
Yeah.
And I noticed you speak like about four languages, which is a clear indicator that you're down on ground.
Yes.
Now, what are some of the bad myths and misconceptions you hear when you're going around in the communities as far as immunization and vaccination is concerned?
Oh, thank you. The myths and conceptions about measles or immunization, one is that the vaccines have come with an intention of killing the children. The other misconception is that they are giving us the best number, the triple six. The other misconception is that why is it they are vaccinated in the previous month? And again, you're coming back, the most recurrent vaccinations, questions arise from there. But you realize that many of these questions are raised because some people do not pay attention to the information being passed on. And majorly, the religious sects in these sub-counties in the district have been, have affected us so much. One sub-county that is very prominent is that Bubiangu SubCounty, which has a sect of triple six. For them, when they see people coming for vaccination, they will take off and enter into the forest and you never find them. Others go deep up to the other district and they stay there for over a month fearing the vaccination. So like my Secretary for Health said, with the support from the RRD's office, we move out, plan and sit down and agree how we are to handle this. For the previous exercise, we planned to move out at 4:00 AM. And indeed, the RRD's office provided security. We went at 4:00 AM and when we reached there, the family members, once they noticed there were people out, they jumped through the windows and disappeared, the elders, but left their children equipped with pangas and heavy sticks to make sure that they attack any person coming before them. However, as a district, we are ready to serve. The Gis of Bubiangu, Bubiangu Subcount is very much on ground, helped us with the security, the police with guns and helped us to capture the children who were there. So we were able to vaccinate 28 children. Coming down to other sub-counties like that of Usoba, Bubiangu, the district laid strategies of making sure that the DHT moved out to make sure that they reach out to these families. We moved out with Dr Mohumuzo from Ministry of Health and we are able to reach to these families. We had these discussions and dialogues with them. One thing that I want to acknowledge the Ministry of Health and our partners for supporting us is that issue of making sure that they bring stakeholders on board. The stakeholders, the The stakeholders, the religious leaders. The religious leaders, the cultural leaders, community have played a very vital role in this. I want to thank the religious leaders. That some of the churches that used to resist as I speak, one of them being in Usano sub-county, have now welcomed the vaccination. And we are saying, we need to do a lot more on community engagement, sensitization, and make sure that we leave no child behind. As Mbaale district, I personally feel, and I know my DHO is very passionate on this, that if we are not in it ourselves to make sure that every person knows the benefits, the importance of immunization, we still have a challenge. So I want to encourage us to make sure that we get out, mobilize, sensitize, and make sure everybody understands the benefits that come with immunization. The challenge that is facing Mbaale district, Mbaale district local government, our sub-counties are big. I have a village of one VHT who is seated here with seven hundred sixty-seven households, and there are only three VHTs. When it comes to mobilization and sensitization, it's a challenge.
True.
So that means that we need to do a lot via issues of community mobilization, community sensitization, to dispel all the myths and misconceptions about this immunization. The second thing is the issue of data. For us as a district, we have tried to mitigate these issues by following data. So we use our data to review according to the target. Where have we reached? Where are we not catching up? Where are we not getting the target? So every day after the vaccination, the following morning when we have meetings, we discuss that and identify sub-counties that have challenges. And that's how we try to address them. A sub-county that is underperforming, our emphasis is laid there. As a DHT, we move there and see to it that we are trying to make sure we reach everyone. But the biggest problem here, our sub-counties in the Mbaale district local government have been underfunded in a way that when they were dividing the sub-counties, like said, dividing them for us as a district, they didn't divide our sub-counties. The sub-counties remained bulk. And so the allocation of funds when they allocate, that they're allocating for villages, as Mbaale district local government, we have six hundred ten villages. So they allocate to only six hundred ten villages. Yet one sub-county can be having, at least maybe more than a hundred households, which need more allocation. Other districts have higher allocations, Mbaale district, because of the way they did it has a very low allocation of funds.
Okay, thank you so much, Ag- uh, wow. She she's, she's mentioned it, yeah? Okay, now at this particular point, I'd like to thank the panelists, but let's stay seated where we are because we are going to engage the audience who have very burning questions out there and also issues to raise. I believe some of these issues, the panelists might be able to respond to or they might not, but let's try to show by raise of hands. Agnes, I'll beg for you to help, or you have somebody to help us move around with the microphone? Okay, there's a gentleman with a hand raised up there. You introduce yourself and then your question, please. Let's try to make them brief so we can capture as much as possible. Okay?
Uh, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I'm called Masa Musa.
Yes.
I have no question, but I wanted to add something.
Okay, please go ahead.
There's something which, uh, the districts see, stare, have whatever, respect, not mention about it, is the issue of manpower. We have a problem here in Mbaale, which which at times leads to poor immunization and whatever. You may, you find VHTs, maybe they are true, and are moving to a place, as they said, a very big area, very big area. And now this one forces them to go and even remove the nurses in health centers to join these things so that the exercise is done. So to me, I feel, because of the low manpower, the area is big, the people who are doing the work are very few. So the target cannot be met.
Okay.
Two, I also want to talk about, uh, some of these, uh, VHTs, VHTs are overlooked by the village whatever. You are born of the area, you are going to somebody's home, he's highly educated than you, you want to sensitize him, he will ask you, what are you going to teach me? So to me, I feel, the best way, these people get a team, to go to the villages. They organize, this one, tell the VHTs to organize people at the village level, then somebody comes from town or from at least a sub-county to come and do some sensitization to those people in the village. Lastly,
Okay.
issue, uh, when you talk about Mbaale, actually, I'm happy, there are places in this area where you think you're in Kenya. More so where I come from. There's a place up there called Marunda. Those areas, you are, before you reach that area, you must go through another, another, another district. You go to Mbaale district in order to come back to Mbaale city. So these people who are doing the exercise, they get hard life. At times, as you say, when you go to Marunda, madam, you reach there, you may even think you are in Kenya. You can even ask, is this place part of Uganda? Now, people to carry this exercise in that area, they find life very hard. After all, they know there are no people who are expecting them. They will say, ah, we have covered here, after we are tired. And indeed, when you look at the place, you get confused with them. Uh, so I'm trying to look at, for this exercise to go on well, I'm requesting this people, this place which I way of at least making the the roads, even if you have a heavy vehicle, you can't reach there. You reach a level, stand, and they are carried, this is what vaccines are, they are whatever, heavy. So I'm looking at that, that we are looking at what, why was Mbaale poorly? They didn't, they didn't perform well, what was the problem? And now I'm giving the reasons why the performance was poor, as they are trying to say. Lastly.
It had better be last indeed.
Look, I'm trying to talk about local beliefs. These people are talking about religious whatever, but even educated people, educating the people who are even having masters, they also tend to tell people, ah, ah, this drug, if you inject your child in a period of thirty years, not give, you not, you not maybe deliver a child. Eh? So there are those, they, then, because now, even radios, there's this radio called what? There's a program called Mwana Omami. When you watch it and listen, when you try to listen to that program on TV and radio, step, is it step whatever? Or the pastor, one of the pastors in Kampala, we always watch it, there's a man called Mwana Omami. They they said that there's a program which those foreign countries have organized, that within a period of thirty years, ah, the whole country will be finished. Now, if you, if you are listening to such a program, we allow your child to be immunized. I think I'm clear. So with those few remarks, I had many, but let me give a chance to others also to respond. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, please, the the, that, that, there is a lady here in front of you. We we will get a chance for everybody to participate, to try as much as possible.
I'm a pete smaya, a VHT from Namanyoni, Northern Division. So, uh, for the case of immunization, I go on routine immunization, that is routine, eh? It's the allocation of the outreachers, I assure. That's why that many, many, many mothers or parents see they don't reach the outreachers. Like Namagumba, the outreach is one, and we have eleven villages. So some people, some families, they look a distance, so they don't respond well, and sometimes they miss, that's one. Then another thing is during this massive immunization, the allocation of four, of days of immunization, we are few. They were, they were not even catered for, like now, uh, we underwent four days immunization, but there were a few. So up to now, there are some who are still immunizing. More especially in Namanyoni, but I cannot talk of anywhere else. So that is the case. Another third thing is the commutation. What mention of VHTs? Uh, let me tear this out.
Please.
The VHTI, we were there to do household registration. And then there, our focal person, or the health assistant told us that you do this exercise, but you get this amount. But at the end of the day, we just received the twenty thousand, and then all the VHTs were demoralized. They said, ah, only ten thousand, and they told us another figure, and are giving us another figure. They didn't communicate at first time to say that this part, this program is other to, organization is, the WHO and the UN, they just told us recently, many people have refused. They said, hmm, cut, get crazy, out of this big work. And I'm over the, the villages, eh? Okay, the the cells are wide. They are very wide. So you you just make sure that at least you make deadly four days working hard. So that is the, eh, the case, so our motivation should be also on.
Okay, let's, let's move fast to us, of course, no, that's a very pertinent issue. First move to the front here, we are going to come, try to address all of the bits, that is, that that's unfortunate. Okay, please go ahead, sir.
Uh, Mreena Bamasaba, Mwanyala. Kama sinakase bana ngavastevi, Masigand spokesperson, wezoo yema saba, we bukuka, we bamasaba. But in the interest of protocol, I had something to say. Allow me to observe protocol. Naturally, I have the deputy prime minister, Iziamasaba, the Bamasaba culture institution. I would not want to contradict my boss, let him make a submission, then I will come in. Thank you.
Uh, Bamasaba, mwena yomoesetan. Mwena yorundi? Uh, let me take this opportunity to thank the Minister of Health and the people who are coordinating the, the issue of the children. I'm really very happy on behalf of Iziamasaba.
Thank you.
And I have to be open. This, eh, VHT, is it VHTI? They have been doing things left and right. But some of us, like cultural leaders, like me, I didn't know very much about it. But I'm very grateful for madam and the group to have invited cultural leaders, and it should be open in the whole Uganda. We always have meetings. And once this thing comes in like this, like today, I've learnt a lot, and I've got even concerned with the lives, life of our children, especially my grandchildren. I didn't know these diseases, they have mentioned. Today, that's why I sat here like this, as they have been invited, they have talked over TB, which I I knew, that's common. Polio, even sometime I was also with during my youth, I was a victim. Hepatitis, I didn't know this. Eh, measles, ah, okay, that is okay. Then HPV, for the girls, I really got concerned. And some of us, even the parents, we don't know that there's that disease. Cancer, over, Baba Sakulipu Nabana. Eh, sarbix, yes. And since here today, when she talked about it, we are here very quiet and listening, and we got concerned. So we went, even as far as we're talking about deworming, and some of us even, we take it not very serious. But when she explained the, the effects of deworming, sincerely, we got concerned. In particular, myself. And we don't even bother to check on our children, even ourselves like this. So this type of dedication is good. And I'm, as I'm requesting, please, when we have meetings, please inform us, and we get the messages, and later we madam, we shall be inviting these leaders, when we have, we have our local, eh, eh, cultural meetings, we give them a, 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 a chance to talk to the people. And all, all of us, we shall be talking about it, if all of us are getting involved. We have got clinical persons, we have got general assembly, what have you, those organs are there. They will pass the message and they will go, and it was so that we bring out this doubt of people. Even me, I was doubting, before that, I said, eh, vaccinating four, five times, what's all this? You know, I was a vet, and I was wondering, did I, you, you said you, era? Vaccinating six times, five, eh, eh, four months, again, three months, and then this. So when a local person is not explained properly, definitely, they start running away and avoiding. But when you explain, especially the cultural leaders, and also we go down to explain our clinical persons, and while we go down there, then we understand what the importance of vaccination. I'm very happy, I'm very thankful, I wish you a good stay here. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your deliberations.
Deputy Prime Minister.
Thank you so much.
Mwanyala, Mwanyala, Mwami, Nomiya Nwamimi, our Prime Minister, Iziamasaba, thank you for those words. Now he has given guidance, I'm able to follow, so that I don't contradict my boss, which is a great support. We have worked closely with Dr. Moses Mgonia, he has always invited us. We want to pledge and commit that as a cultural institution, we are going to mobilize our people from top to clans, you know, for us who operate in clans, we have about three. Mwambu, which is Rongkobambuli, we have one in Mbaale, Mbaale city, Mbaale district, then Mwoya, Namissindo, Avududa, and Amanafa. So we want to pledge that as a cultural institution, and I'm pledging this on behalf of the cultural leader, of Bamasaba, his highness, Jidmy Mudoma, and all his cabinet, that we are going to use all mechanisms and platforms available to ensure that we mobilize uh, our people. And when we are talking about our people, we are not meaning Bamasaba alone. Because here is cosmopolitan nature, we have the Chinese, the Indians, anybody on our soil will be mobilized to go and immunize. Uh, you know, currently, I wanted to sound a little bit cultural in nature. When you look at a number of diseases, uh, the diseases that I've talked about here, they are historical or cultural in nature. However, there's a point of departure now. Whereas we immunize people currently, in the past was different. When you read Exodus twenty-three, verse twenty-five, it says, uh, "You shall serve the Lord, your God, and he shall bless you, your water and bread, and will take away sickness from you." Now, in the past, you did not need to get immunized, you only needed to serve the Lord. And after serving the Lord, the Lord will heal the diseases. But currently, apparently, our road is far away. So this time round, eh, this time round, we must, what? Immunize. Yeah, we must immunize. I want to thank you so much, I remain to be Masigand spokesperson of Iziamasaba.
Thank you so much for that, um, this humor, okay?
Thank you very much. Yagalo kualomchisa gnoke waza, eksongreti immunization, nivotunure mabeganyo, ga breakdown is not is not uka, abana bafe measles is ba deti zikari uka. Polio and immunization, abana bafangolukusense uka, now and then, not so. Now, because of immunization, abana bafe ba deti ba chapa. Now, ekaka tino ngavetizewe chitiki, chite geda. Twe yonge remo kola omrimo, okusensitizinga abantu. Tulabire dalange nbatizonda zivukolaki, zivao. Abadna dala vazade. Avazade, kominte ye, na ye, avazade, mu immunization mu antinento. Avazade tu, twe yonge remo okubavuri la, kuanga etukuba kwa asiza bamu. Be yonge remo okuvuri du du adalati. Boben yine ba immunizingi wa, ngavachali mbutu, ne abana bawe. Eh, nchiaba yakuvuza kadi, kuanga nze wali woma na, abadage ndokola emirimo, ne bagambireta immunization kadi, oma na li thirty-two years. Bagalo kmu omrimo, ne bagala kadi ya immunizationi, ojirina. Wetu vudana vazade ba ina immunization zidu. Eksera chitu se, echokuvuza immunization kadi. Leso bat eko kuzi, okuera ngawazitereka. Immunization kadi zibana vera nazu. Bati okukuha mwa na, ogenda, kufuna pasporti, ogenda we ru, data immunization chi, kadi. Muzirina, wa abana bame, bazirina, tuteko kuzitereka, atetona chichi yakui inkaregi nga, abana bafe kuera immunization. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, please, the gentleman towards that side, yes, okay.
Uh, thank you, madam, I'm Gizamba Mohammed Isa, for my chair personnel, listen to the recording. Uh, my question is very simple, you go direct to madam working for Minister of Health. In fact, when you get the VHTs, really, they are doing some good work in the community there.
A clap, please.
Moving to the area of coordination, area of communication, they are really doing some good work. All along we have been advocating, at least the government, to organize something for All along, we have been advocating, at least the government, to organize something for them. So I just want to ask Madame, who came from Minister of Health, that what plans are there? At least to give these people something, some good involvement, that they can be motivated to do some good work effectively. Thank you very much.
Okay, can we have some, like, two brief, um, two brief questions, then after which we will be able to get some responses?
Yes, product observed, the Monsieur Godifres, my name, from Bali district local government, supporting TB and reproach services, the district. I have a question to the Minister of Health officer. Or basing on the funding gap, uh, which was raised by the panelists. You realize that there is a funding basing on institutions, sub-counties, not population? Which strategy is there right now? As you've heard, it's a problem to the service delivery. Are we going to continue serving, funding the money basing on what? Institutions, or sub-counties, or the population? Another question goes to the path as an entity that is helping us advocate this. Is this advocacy ending here today? Or is it continuing to cascade the information to the grassroots? Finally, I have another question, in relation to our colleague has just woken up. Little involvement to the VHTs, is it written on the stone that VHT should get tens of that per each activity? Thank you very much. It is very little for a human being, with this current cost of life. I submit.
Okay, um, okay, let me, let's first have, just hold it there, let's just have a few responses while it is still, you know, before we lose out on some of those questions. I'd like to beg sister, for you to be able to respond very briefly to the responses. Microphone, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, it's on. Hello, um, the microphone? Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes. Well, some of the questions that have been, first, I want to appreciate, uh, the Iziamasaba for, for the commitment that you have given us, that you are going to support us across these exercises that we bring on board. And also inform the house that it's not the first time that we are working with stakeholders, different stakeholders, as Minister of Health. Everything comes to engage every stakeholder, because we all have a stake. At the health of the population, okay? So some of us supporting mobilization, others supporting the sensitization, others do the actual technical bit of giving the vaccine, and others do the reporting. And others also do the looking out for, informing the ministry of any outbreaks that are emerging, so that we are able to respond. So it is a multi-sectoral activity where we all engage ourselves as all stakeholders, including our district leaders, the city leadership, the religious leaders, the cultural leaders, and the parents and caretakers. So the VHTs have been playing a very big role in ensuring that these services happen. Because the VHT, you are the people down there, and you are the neighbors of these clients that we look out for. You have, we have been playing a very key role in, first of all, identifying who is eligible for what, and also informing, passing on the message about the services that we need to administer. However, indeed, Minister of Health has not had a stipulated pay, kind of, for the VHT, and continues to utilize the little P H C, the primary healthcare fund, which comes to the local governments and cities, to just give a small sum water along the way. Which we know is, actually, VHT is a voluntary job, like village voluntary health worker. However, we know that you volunteer beyond, you really volunteer beyond that you are supposed to do. So there is need, actually, for some facilitation to allow you keep moving as well. I will only pledge to take this back to my leaders at Minister of Health, to also table it at that level, that the VHTs are doing a lot of work. And for us to reach these numbers, this through them, how best can we have a standard facilitation for the VHTs? So I don't have a definite answer for that one here. Secondly, based on funding, the funding modality, where Minister of Health uses administrative structures or administrative units to quantify what resource or what fund goes to a district. Uh, this, I shouldn't, I wouldn't say that this is cast on stone, that we are using the administrative structures. If you realize the recent campaigns that we have just had, it is population-based. We base on population to quantify how much resource goes to a certain district or city. Because of the population of numbers that we are supposed to reach. So it is only on interventions like this, which is the big catch-up, where we have said, we are going to every village. So how do we measure that actually this village has been reached? We had to quantify the resource based on the number of villages that we are supposed to reach. However, Minister of Health also uses most often the population, not the administrative units, that is where we are going to. Indeed. And then, um, is that all? Yes, about the advocacy, I think that is something that is ongoing. However, I will also request that in our colleagues, like I said, we work with partners, and the question goes to our EBO partners who supported this event, whether this engagements will continue. But I also know that we have civil society organizations that have been engaged at this level, who will continue with the advocacy henceforth. Thank you.
Okay, would you like to respond, was there a question in line directly where you're concerned, or the DHO? Please, let's make it brief, because we would like to get more responses, questions from them.
Maybe I'll respond to one, as secretary for social services, Mba district. Um, the representative of Iziamasaba raised the concern that in most cases, we don't involve the Inzu when it comes to mobilization. But I want to inform him that Iziamasaba has so many people who represent it at different levels. So sometimes we have interacted with some representatives of the Inzu in some of the campaigns. But maybe this time round, we shall follow protocol by forwarding letters requesting for their representative, so that when someone comes to represent Inzu, they are also aware of his coming or her coming.
Thank you so much, that's great. Response, please.
Thank you so much. Just to supplement on what he has just said, we as Mba district local government have never had any health activity without Iziamasaba. The challenge has been whom to invite. But in the previous meeting, we have identified the key people, and we promise never to miss you out.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Then, I just want to say one thing only, to my Minister of Health. Please, carry this message about funding basing on population other than those units, thank you.
Okay, the DHO, please pass the microphone to the DHO.
Uh, thank you, Madame Moderator. Um, there was an issue of having few outreachers and with a few days. I think this is a challenge in the city, because as much as my colleague in the local government is talking about 600 villages, we have only 389 cells, which are the equivalent of a village. And these are densely populated cells. Just imagine, if you do the equivalence, if you put one team here and one team in the other village, I think it will take like almost two weeks. Yet you are basically allocated the same number of days as some of the villages, which only have 25 households, according to the standards of Uganda for a village. Because there are one Muzigu alone, it has more people than some of the villages in this country. Guess in view, you go to Mirembeselo, Chichafuselo, Namatala, Mvleselo there. People are just like, they're just too many. I don't want to use any other word apart from too many, because it may, it may appear like marginalizing my people. Um, then the other one is about to, uh, the issue of, of, of the, of the, some of these resistant religions in, around Elgon region. I think I can give a scenario where we successfully negotiated, and as we talk now, we're in good working relationships. I think we have the headquarters of 366 in Usamaga, and they are deformed their own school, and they are basically resistant to anything called modernization. From schools to even vaccination, plus other interventions. So when we go to know about this population, of course, we use what you call carrot and stick. I invited them for a series of meetings, taking a lot of hours to explain why they believe the way they believe. When we are listening carefully, and we even challenged them to produce evidence to their, to why they are believing the way they believe. They had some papers with articles written, all kinds of negative messages. And what I noted in those articles, one, they are not headed. Two, they are not signed. Three, they didn't have any stamp. So I used their own documents, basically destroy them. I told them, even me, as you see me here, I can just go to any cafe around the town and write any message and claim that is the way it is, how you framed it. So what you have seen doesn't hold any water. So basically, this is just falsifying to destroy some very positive intervention. And that was towards the end, when I was making my summary. And I told them that you, as you are here, you can able to read the Bible, and I'm told you are teaching people. Were you born when you knew how to read, or you learnt what somebody taught you? They told me they are taught and they are in class, but they have since discovered the truth. And I said, okay, were you vaccinated? They said, yes, you were vaccinated. And I even challenged them to say, to show me one of their right shoulders to see if they have that mark of B C G. And all of them had. So from that point on now, I was now using the stick, kind of, with words, very strong words. I just told them that I've listened to all your deliberations. That was towards the last day, I think we had about three engagements in separate weeks. So I told them, from what you, we have discussed, I've heard from you and your evidence, you seem to be people who are bent when destroying the forthcoming generations. You benefited from these services when you are vulnerable, but now you have vulnerable people who cannot speak for themselves, and you still want, you want to deny them a service. You must not be people who are right-thinking and in the right place to protect those people. So I told them, as government of Uganda, we shall do our best to make sure the children of Uganda are protected. And anybody who stand in their way, we are going to make sure, as the president calls it, crush. We shall crush you. So with those threats, this time round, when they went back, they received very minimal resistance among those communities. So I take it as a success story. That's why I'm narrating it such that some of our colleagues in here, in Imbali, and who are here can copy it and apply it elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay, please pass the microphone to the beautiful lady in the middle. We can't, you're, I believe you have a question somewhere that came directed in your area.
No, it didn't come, but just a supplement on what my brother said is that we look at the illiterate, yet there are some literate communities that, to give an example, during the first round of vaccination, we had a full doctor who was against vaccinating his children. But when we came in as security, he later on accepted. So it is a call out there to everyone. And then the other request would be that since we've come together, brought stakeholders together, we should have this information given to them, mostly the cultural leaders and the religious leaders. So that as they are preaching to the congregation, they pass out that information to the people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, do we have a representative from the religious leaders? Please, pass on the microphone, religious, pass on to him, because at least we've heard from the cultural leaders. Oh, there's a gentleman at the front here, first give the gentleman at the front, then we'll come to you, please.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam, warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Uh, mchisagno, ukweva za ministera fe. Okujana vanga, ali kutusomesa ngiri, jibali akutanga mmoyo kuki maavana. Ne vaza, kansala vange, aisha mugoya, yanga mbio konti, jangua, jangu meeting gena. Ne yechiliso wuzibo na, enzikiliza yena kuzene meru sewo. Mya kejange juno, batu kuvanga, mpiso kumukono juno jio mbie. Toa kuluanga tetufunye wuzibo namu kuluala wa ali mbereyo. Mya ka jechi na nawano, ewa ngena firo abana basato mnu ni gumu, ngavafa luxes. Ne yu wata ndiko kugema abana luxes, katia kua tomua na, na yee ajampoa na ruani somana yonavaanga, awonye. Ne yee enzikiliza zanose ngambiye, okambanti, fetu tuge na mdualiro. Tebatuku vangepiso kuvanga enzikiliza yafe tetukiliza. Echokubiri, na wano vabaza abantu wa nomyo Uganda, ne yewaliwa vaga nyen tenzikiliza yafe, tetukiliza kwe ranga batu vala. Ngambiye tenzikiliza meru sewo ye reso mutawana, ne yokugema abana. Omami yoricha manu e malu ndengulu ya manye mbere zireyo. Toja kupata muntu echara, sumeswa muntu echara, omeni nyini kualabako buru naku, kumbere na akilize. Okujaka konti tima, edja kuvanga mchibukeeno. Ne atemukambiye involuntari, omuntu okukolo omrimo, involuntari omutana tambulati okuvone, mbala gende wafe bukonde. Chiba chite gaza, antava yaga mo transport. Tosolo kua tomami, e wimalu na sumeswa abantu kuvintu bi kua tega no blamunu, na akiliza. Bagalo muntu mupia ngaba olavanga, vatu demasowano. Nule chonti, tukaze konyo, tusomesa abantu avebiareyo. Uro kuta na vade vange yonga sumeswa, nganmuzikitinsa zavasilawa. Ne abantu vata mude yonga ba kugema abana, ne yewaliwa buakuta abana, ne vava kueka ngatavaga lo va keme. Minister of Iziamasaba ngambiye ko onoti, abada ali ngali okuchia mu kuvanga, okugema kua buru kasela, kua buru kasela, na yekua vade kwe ranga kumutisamu. Ne yokugema, gambe tere, gambe tere kilizo kuta abantu vayo, ne enzikiliza zavantu vano. Baro zanti, kugema abana ndo zoliwa wuzibo, na yee, ne vaza nyume so kwe rango oze, fe, abana dayo, abana tukiliza na dalafu muzikitinzene, mmo muzigitoguli enguluweyo. Zene ngamba vasila muntu, woluala genda mdualiro. Okume wano tusabire, rombe duan, ne yengoma zo genda wa mdualiro. Ne wana gambanti kankusabire duan, luxes akuto mua nata yaku wana yaku fa. Ne vaza zanyo meva, nyo meva kompiliza.
Karli, thank you so much, the next person, nozajen, uh-huh.
I want to thank everyone who has been in this participation since morning. I respect each one of you, protocol observed. I want to say a word or two in a submission to what we've been discussing. I believe God is a healer. And I also believe doctors work and they treat us. But there are some people, like me, I'm talking on behalf of the Pentecostal. There are other cults that are there, whom actually we don't know. We are talking about 66, but there are others, actually, you have not mentioned. In Imbali, we have over 300 and 350 churches, Pentecostal churches. But there are others which are not mentioned, we're talking about only 66. But there are others who believe they don't need treatment. They only pray, and some of us here also are feeling that. You discover that we use the name of God in a different manner. Yes, we believe God heals, like Psalms, chapter 103, God heals all sicknesses. And so some of them pick that and move with that scripture, and they don't believe in immunization. And they make their own cult. But I believe if... But I believe if, uh, the churches are mobilized through our leadership, the chairman, we call him the chairman of pastors in Imbale, MEF, and he calls all the pastors. And the medical people or team meets these pastors. I believe there will be a right forum to minister and these people will get the point what we are discussing about. I beg and I request maybe the medical team should actually involve them in that way, to call them. You discover that some of the churches, we are talking about the PAG or whatever, whatever church, may not believe in immunization. But when we call the leaders and all of them get the point, I know they will get this message reaching to the rightful people. Like I would say, most of these activities, some of them are left out. But like my colleagues, the sheks, the, the head of those, you know, religious corners, if they are all called upon, I believe we can conquer this issue and it will be no more. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, to, to the gentleman at the back, then the hajjat here at the back.
Uh, thank you so much, viewers and colleagues. I stand here on behalf of civil society organizations. And one of the roles and responsibilities that I have realized is so important in this exercise or in these discussions we are talking about is the issue of community sensitization, community mobilization. So I hope that after this meeting, like you said, our colleagues who have been facilitating the path, for instance, who are facilitated here, will get an opportunity for us to draw a strategy of how we are going to ensure that our citizens are made aware of the importance of immunization in protecting children and also families and livelihoods. One, we will probably include in our strategy, what you would call music, dance and drama. A lot of our communities would like to come and listen to music and dance. So we did give the message on the importance of our immunization. Then we also have, um, what we call road, we, we drive around the communities. We go to the markets and there we will give our message on the importance of immunization. The other thing of course is to also try and translate some of these messages that probably the Minister of Health has done. And we need to translate them in our Luma Sahaba and the other local languages which are in our city and also in the district. The other of course is to ensure that all the leaders, the local leaders, the LOC ones, those committees, health committees, all those are brought on board for them to understand what the message is, like what we have done today. We were able to, uh, you know, like the health person was able to tell us these schedules. Our people are not aware, and that is why the, even the Inzuma Sahaba, he's not aware, that actually we have a schedule of immunization, stage one, stage two, stage three. So all this information, we should now disseminate this information in all sorts of languages. That is my humble proposal. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your submission.
Thank you very much, protocol observed. I'm Aisha Mungoya, my name is the chairperson of the VHTs of Imbale City, secretary for, for social services in Imbale City, but I'm in here for his worship, the mayor, and as a VHT. I first and foremost thank the government of Uganda, Minister of Health, for the good programs they bring for us on ground as, as Uganda as a whole. Uh, me being on behalf of the VHTs, I'll talk about the programs we have been moving around. We have already finished the Polio one, Polio two, you are on the way as they told you. Our catchment areas are big, but you are on the way finishing. I'm about the big catchment which is coming on. I thank the big catchment which is coming on, as you heard about with my VHTs. Uh, this big catchment needs, needs us as VHTs, as the focal person, persons, to go back to the ground, to sensitize the communities. Let us go back and sensitize the community because me, as I was moving around during Polio two, I had already known that we are going to have a big catchment. But I was telling my, my community members, by, after two weeks or one week, you are going to come back again for another immunization. They were asking as they were saying, again, you are coming back to us. So please, the big catchment and very, very many immunizations are going to take place. So please, my kindly request, uh, let the incharges see that the health workers who are going to be on ground. And before I come to that, I will thank the, the ministry for what you have done for us. It was a challenge for, for Polio one and Polio two. One health worker, up to now, as she said, they have not finished one cell. As she's saying in her cell, up to now, they have not finished their households in Nabwea. It is a cell, have an health worker like this. When are they going to finish? We are shooting at one hundred percent, CHO said. Now, I thank you what you have come with, started your view, three days per village. But you will look at the three days per village and you see the activities we are going to do. Really, me, I'm seeing, you are seeing that there are very many days, but according to the activities, really let us sensitize the community, the parents who are going to bring the children to, to know what is going to be done or what is going to be worked on their children. Secondly, I want to request that the focal persons who are going to head, head this program, tell our health workers to keep time, tell our health workers to, let them have, have materials which are enough. Tell them to, to have, to have attitude towards the people are coming to bring the children to be, to be immunized. Uh, because there's a time a man came bringing the children to be immunized. The man was just surprising. He came carrying one of the child on the back, another one on this side. So immediate, I think a nurse asked, where is your wife? Please, let them welcome everyone who is coming to bring the children to immunize. Let us, let us not ask unless is the child bringing a child. That one I can agree with them. But if someone brings, let them, allow them to come. Uh, I had, I've heard about Plaz Quatro, Plaz Quatro tablets. Imbale City is a victim of Plaz Quatro. I was a victim during that day. That's why I'm telling you, I think three days with very many activities, Plaz Quatro tablets, this dwelling. Are you going to give it a day? That time we immunized, we, we, we gave those dwelling tablets. They told us that we should sensitize the parents, the schools, to give these students some food before they take that tablet. Now, this tablet is coming again on ground. It is among the, the program and Imbale City, especially in Kondi, we were affected. As they told you, it is coming on ground. I was affected. All the children, we, we gave those dwelling tablets, they knew that I'm the one, I'm their counselor. They started fainting, parents were carrying children to me. They, I even called CHO, CHO, what should I do, in charge? They are carrying children to me, the children are dumped in the hospitals. Please, give us a day for Plaz Quatro tablets. Sensitize the parents to know that when you bring your children for that immunization, they should fast eat so that they give, they are given that tablet.
Thank you.
On behalf of his worship, the mayor, I not leave the, I, I know I'm not going to get another chance. I thank Path for having come in for this as the, as a, an important immunization for our, our children in the country. Path has come in, as I'm talking now, I know I'm under Imbale District. Today is Imbale District, under my fork. I was wondering, me as Imbale City, where is my CBO? And moreover, in Imbale, I have CBOS which can work with me. I've left my fork, they have been working with us with the original Imbale, Imbale District, and they are already in Imbale District. Where is Imbale City? Where is my CBO? My, I need a CBO which is also within Imbale City. We have CBOS which are working within Imbale City. Please, give us a CBO so you start sentencing our people. Thank you very much. This is Imbale District I need from Imbale City. I remain in Tony Aisha Mungoya. And I, I ask also, I not to make, to remove, leave without asking this. Uh, I will make apologies to one of my VHT. This is a matter of, uh, sensitizing people. If I told the focal persons, I told the VHTs that there are two parties paying, they could, couldn't have resisted to, to, to move this second round. Tell the focal persons to be telling these people, for us, we are ready, we do voluntary work. But when you tell us that you are going to give us a coin and within this time, we ever wait. We are scratching our phones every time, looking for that payment. Where is it?
Message.
Please, please, please tell them that WHO is paying, UNICEF is paying, so that UNICEF will pay in this period, then this one will pay. So, thank you, but as they asked, is it a payment for ministry? Was it written on the stone as they said, for the VHTs? When are you going to consider VHTs to be paid? That's ten thousand you considered us. When will it reach? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Wow, okay, do we have any other questions? Have we run out of, no more questions? Okay, one last one here. I see a hand up here. We shall take this as the last question, then I get back to the panel at the front to give us their winding up remarks, yeah?
Uh, sent you, madam moderator, protocol observed. Uh, for me, I think we should do, make an amendment in this, some of articles. Because there are some, some saying that there is a freedom of worship to avoid such those, those, those hypocritical leaders, like triple six and whatever. But if you don't change, make an amendment through those articles, still they will hide themselves there. Uh, the second, second to that, in our village there, there are still some people hiding their children, like they did themselves during COVID vaccination. See the same thing they are doing right now. So, and there are some, those VHT, when they, they report, there is no support to the, those, the people concerned when they, they have reported their matters, that they are hiding themselves, they are hiding the children, there is no support for those people. So you need to have, to support those VHT, at least, madam, is it Japtoy? Sent you, I'm called Ibrahim Kamaladi, national researcher.
Okay, now, thank you so much. Oh, you have a hand up? Okay, the last question, please, the lady behind there, she's there.
Thank you so much, congregation around. It is not a question, it is a reminder or an inquiry. I'm a VHT from Nakalo Keruro. Yes, at times when we are trying to complain and then we are like being suppressed that you are voluntary workers. That word VHT is not voluntary, it is village health team. But for some times, like three financial years, they have been telling us that VHTs are going to be included on the payroll. And I remember when it was that when Minister Rafael Majez was like rioting in the parliament over the VHT issue. So when we are now struggling with some issues in the community, trying to touch all that fifth areas and then we come here trying to complaining and you are trying to tell us that it is voluntary, I really can't understand. This is one of the issues which has demoralized some of the VHTs because at least every village is having either three or two. But because of such ways of payment or facilitating, others are declining and leaving most of the load for one person who is saying, okay, let me do this. But please, we are requesting, because life is not ending today. Life is a trend and we need health all the time. We are continuing. Activities are coming every moment, like mushrooms are springing up. So please, we are appealing, help us, support us. We should not be taken like voluntarily completely. We see even these bazungus come here to do voluntary work, but they are being paid. They are being paid somehow. So let it be scared, like maybe as they had said that they are going to be paid like three hundred. We know, even if it is a hundred thousand per month, we shall be comfortable with that. Other than being told and you are doing such an activity, at the end of the whole thing, you are not getting. Like the other time when we go back to hospital net distribution, after that, some people have not received their money. And when we complain, at times we are being misunderstood and misquoted. So if I'm to say, let's all try to do the, the, the like what, what that are you going to get rid from the community? How? Yes, you may be able, but how? This is the issue where, where we are seeing now, you boss is giving, can I call it fake? Unappropriate figures because they are bringing in people from different areas to come and work in areas where they don't know, trying to leave out other people giving us poor figures for poor planning for the nation. Thank you so much. I remain Namasaba Gata Clea.
Thank you so much. I, I thought we were winding up. Now, I, it looks like the temperature is getting higher and higher. When one VHT talks about a matter that you think is very pertinent, oh, okay. Can, can we first get to those two, one of you? Who would like to go first, the ladies? Please, let's make it very brief. Okay, I'll come to you lastly.
I'm a pastor. 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 I'm a government hospital. I'm a government hospital.
Okay. I got it. Okay.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam.
I'm a pastor. 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 I'm a pastor.
Charlie, thank you. This is the last, last one now, the frontier, please make it brief, very brief. One question or one, you know, response or reaction.
My name is Wamimbe Ahmed, VHT. Uh, our big Roro here, we are planning how to make effective mobilization towards the immunization. But remember, VHT, it is the health center one. We always plan a lot of money at high offices, but at village health.
Health center one, you're saying?
Uh, village center one, we do not consider it. And remember, VHTs, we know each every household having children. having children from zero to five, what? Five years. Sincerely, we are doing very well as VHTs on a voluntary what? Basis. But what hurts us is, you may implement your roles on a voluntary basis when you receive a chance of polio access and you have a hope of benefiting in it. Hoping that maybe one VHT might be sub county supervisor or parish code, parish supervisor, but at the end, they bring maybe a CDO, town agent, or someone else, or a teacher to do that work, instead of we, maybe again, we benefit at that what? At that level. And when there is a serious outbreak, VHTs, where are you? Please, consider us, but we are ready, we are ready to do so. I was happy to hear one of my fellow VHT from, from Bala District. He was a district what? Supervisor, but in Bala City, I can't tell.
No, it's been.
Wamimbe Ahmed, VHT, coordinator of Kassach.
Okay, thank you, thank you so, so much, all of you for your wonderful responses. And of course, we're just going to use a few minutes, because I'll strategically use you as the last person to sum it up all from Ministry of Health. I'll start from the other side, please, let's just, in a sentence or two, let's not make it lengthy, it has to be as brief as possible. What are your winding up remarks, based on the conversation that you have had, summary, very brief. Is the microphone on? Please hurry up and provide her with a microphone, she needs to respond. Please have a seat, Agnes, okay?
Okay, I want to take this opportunity to thank everybody for all the discussions. And to me, as a senior health educator, I am meant to create awareness and increase demand for health services. I see most of the issues that have come out are about us making sure that we do mobilization, sensitization. This time, I would like to say Ministry of Health. From this conversation here, I learned that we must build, or we must have capacity down, from down the roots. We need to make sure that sensitization is at each village, village in terms of mobilization through maybe dialogues, community dialogues with the religious leaders you had. They have a lot of religious affiliations to this. So we must have a community dialogue with that team. We need to have dialogues with the VHTs, the village ELC ones, and we need to have, we make sure that we can incorporate music, dance, and drama in mobilizing for these services that community drives, we appreciate. But I want to request that this time prioritize having a van in Bala District local government, one from ministry, to do the mobilization. I know that this one's helped us to catch up where we had a shot for, and I know this will do. The translation we have done, we shall continue doing. Health workers keeping time, we have tried our best and we are going to continue making sure that they try to go out. What can we bring out for the children that have not been immunized? It is me, it is my role and your role who are stayed here to make sure that we now go back and change the misinformation that the communities have and give the correct information. Before we leave here, we are going to go with the schedules, the immunization schedules. Always follow that, use that to sensitize our people, thank you.
Thank you so much, Agnes. Doctor?
Thank you, Madame Moderator. We had a lot of issues, but because of time, let me just. Yeah, about somebody asking that why is vaccination free and the other services are paid for? I think by policy in Uganda, all health services are supposed to be free of charge. And because all these services have been prepaid by you already, by the government of Uganda. And more so with the vaccination, it has even a bigger extra hand from the partners. So if you go to any facility and somebody is demanding for money before they can sue you, I know all of you have smartphones, you quietly pick the phone and take pictures and pretend like you are calling, then you send to some of us. I think that stuff who is demanding for that little money will live to regret. Then why force people to vaccinate, but not for other, treating other diseases? I think we are simply not forcing, but we want you to appreciate that vaccination is very, very important. Actually, it is the second most important public health intervention which can improve the survival of a human being, second only to clean water. So you can see how important it is. So even others, they follow from number three downwards. And besides being very important, the disease they prevent, those diseases often, they spread very fast and they have a lot of disastrous effects to the person, to the community and the country at large in terms of cost of treatment and disabilities they are in. So as such, such circumstances, you call for a stronger arm in case somebody resists. Then for the other diseases, of course, as a health worker, I don't want anybody to fall sick. And if somebody falls sick, I think you can see in your communities. If we find a parent with a child with malnutrition, of course, with due respect, we con them depending on the circumstances at hand. You may find people are simply ignorant, or simply they don't have the resources, they are struggling to even find the basic feeds. But there are others, they are simply negligent. They have the resources, but all they have, they sell and can't drink. And usually, I don't take them lightly. I involve even the forces, I for one, I even recommend even reprimanding such a person. That's how far we go, so it doesn't mean we don't take steps for the other conditions. I think because of time, I will stop there for now. But I think the message I can give is, I call upon all of you as key stakeholders, vaccination is supposed to be done by all of us successfully. Others, participants, advocates, others participate in terms of sensitization and health education, and others, we participate as implementers. So as you can see, as I've highlighted, and even others are founders, like partners and resource mobilizers. So as you can see, it is, the work is cut out for all of us, nobody is left behind. The same with even the press, they have the duty to make sure the people receive the right messages and you have the rightful mindset to embrace this very, very important intervention called vaccination. I think that's what I can give, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you so much. A concern was raised on getting some people from the city go to the villages for, at least to boost up the sensitization. I want us to boil a leaf on politicians during their elections, that big people from the city, they go introduce themselves as being from State House and what have you. So I myself pray myself to come in for that sensitization. I love so much to enter into other religious affiliations, but mostly my papa the Imam, but because of the practices there that I don't know, I sometimes fear to just come in. But if you give me assurance, please, we are always available to give our people such information that is good, for the good of our government and our community. About the, my Agnes hinted about it, we should pull out our sockings for this big catch-up that is coming forth, if we are to achieve the target. It is everyone's responsibility and also call upon everyone here to be an advocate back where we are going, to take back this information, as I re-echo on the issue of giving out handouts to the religious leaders, to the cultural leaders, so as to help us during their church services and other congregations. Thank you so much, the organizers, thank you so much to the other stakeholders.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. And also, I'd like to thank the Ministry of Health, Path and the, and my fork for having organized this meeting. This meeting helps us to reflect on our actions and inactions in the recently concluded polio vaccination, so that we forward. Where we went long, we see where forward on how to improve. Many things have been raised, but I would like to first of all respond to two. The first one being about the amendment of the article that provides for. And I want to tell my brother that Uganda as a nation, much as we are god fearing nation, but we don't have a specific sect where we attach our nation. So everyone is free to worship, but when it comes to government programs, regardless of where you worship from, you have to respect and follow the government programs. So we cannot deal with that, because we also aware that there are some people who don't have religion. So we allow them also to be in our government. Then also another issue of VHTs. Yes, I happen to be part of one of the high profile meetings we had with Minister at Rumyonu. And the issue of VHTs came up. The discussion is not at only this level where we sit. Even at the national level, VHTs, they are aware and they recognize the work that you do. Except that there is some program that is going to come up, that is going to come up to shape and reorganize VHTs. So as you, as your advocate for increment in your pay, you first also assess yourself. We are so aware that some of you have outgrown that the tasks that you're supposed to do as a VHT. So as you, as your advocate for increment, pray also that you be part of those who will be retained as VHTs. This is sounding both those who are saying increment. Thank you very much, Wamimbe Moderator. I've been watching you several times on TV presenting about this kind of program. But as in Bala District, we would like to call upon our His Excellency, the President of Uganda, to summon him up, please, to be fully participating in this catch-up campaign that is forthcoming. Because we have had several coordination meetings at the district as Bala, and I've never seen any of our area MPs come to participate. So I would love so much to see the energy and the commitments that they exhibited in recently concluded bill of UCDA, where they all raised in high gears to advocate for not transfer or transfer. I would like to see the same energies used to advocate for this forthcoming catch-up polio vaccination from the MPs of Uganda. As Bala District will remain committed to working with our partners, with the government, to ensure that this vaccination becomes a success. As I speak now, we have coordination meeting going on, and I'm supposed to be in that meeting, but because of this meeting, I had to postpone the other one. I would like to thank how we've made the time to come and attend this engagement. And I believe we are not going back at the same way we came. I wish you good night, Mrs. Masaba James, Rosifai Councilor of Umbo Sabu County, Regional Secretary of Social Services, Bala District Local Government, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. I want to start by thanking UBC and other media houses for covering this up and also thank Path and other organizations that have made this possible. And also emphasize that as Ministry of Health, we really appreciate the work of VHTs. We are now seeing in the spirit of prevention is better than cure, okay? And all primary healthcare services happen at the village level, where the VHTs are. So all your efforts are highly appreciated and it is the reason for the health Uganda that we see today. So whatever has come out of this meeting, I want to pledge that we'll move it forward. And also about your remuneration, we'll also work together with the partners that are supporting us to ensure that whatever they have pledged to support actually reaches the beneficiary, so that you are able to also sustain yourself as you're out there. And seeing the spirit, I also want to sing the song of the big catch-up. Let us put all our efforts to the big catch-up, let's mobilize for it, have all our children vaccinated. We want at the end of this activity, that every child's vaccination card has been updated and everyone has received whatever vaccine they had ever missed. And in that way, we shall have a safe Uganda and without the vaccine preventable diseases. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much, you've been a wonderful panel. I believe your input, each and everybody has been able to appreciate what has been said there. Now, the VHTs, do you believe that you responsible and have a very big role to play in the immunization that is coming? I don't hear big yes.
Yes.
Okay, the cultural leaders, do we believe, or do you believe that you have a very important role to play? Nabi, nabi. Okay, the religious leaders, do you agree that you have a very big role to play in the upcoming immunizations? Do we agree that the big catch-up is the way to go? Really, like that? Do we agree that the big catch-up is the way to go? Fantastic. Well, thank you so much, you've also been very wonderful, your input cannot be ignored. I believe the stakeholders, the partners, Ministry of Health, GAVI, WHO, UNICEF, and Path, most importantly, have taken in whatever single bit you have said. It has been the town hall meeting here in Bala, and would like to say thank you so much. At this particular time, I'd like to hand you back to transmission for normal programming, thank you.